This is the Monroe Town Council meeting Monday, October 26, 2015. If you'd join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. All of the members of council are present in the building. I just want to know for the record that Mr. Knapp is attending a Trumbull Monroe Health District meeting within Town Hall. So, once that meeting adjourns, he will join us. Mr. Vavrick is absent this evening. He is at an, a regional EDC event, so he wanted me to advise everybody of that. Before we move on, I want to just make a few amendments to the agenda. Under action items, I want to add F, Strategic Planning Committee, and G, the EMS Facility Work Group. And those will become standing additions under action items. They're essentially additional committees that we need reports from. We've been getting those reports through, at least the EMS report, through the EMS, Ms. Heim's some committee, so I thought it would be more appropriate to have that as a standalone. And to new business, item K, Credit Card Authorization Resolution, which was discussed in LNA this evening, and we'll discuss it further later this evening. Moving on to Mr. O'Rourke.
One point, I don't know if it matters, but the very top of the agenda has Tuesday, October 26th, instead of Monday.
Mine has Monday.
Mine has Monday.
Mine is Monday.
The one that was in our packet, I believe, had the wrong name.
Oh, sorry.
It was probably Deus.
That's probably why there's one on the dais for us. But thank you for pointing that out, Mr. O'Rourke. Does everybody have the correctly dated agenda that was sitting up on the dais this evening?
Right.
All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any comments to the consent calendar? Changes, additions, anything? All right, seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar. Moving on to communications. A, memo from the first electman of Town Council Chairman dated October 20th, 2015 regarding a donation to the volunteer emergency medical service. B, memo from the first electman of Town Council Chairman dated October 20th, 2015 regarding a donation to the Police Department. C, memo from the first electman of Town Council Chairman dated October 20th, 2015 regarding an appointment to the Economic Development Commission. D, memo from the first electman to Town Council Chairman dated October 21st, 2015 regarding an appointment. My intention regarding the contracts was that, obviously, every contract pursuant to our new procedures since I've been chairman has been that the contract, every contract is reviewed, at least every contract that we know about is reviewed in LNA. And I further discussed that some of the minor contracts, I would put on the agenda and put them under the consent calendar. I haven't, I don't believe I've done that yet, but I will, I will do that. And again, so everybody's clear, if something's on the consent calendar and anybody wants to discuss it, I would entertain a motion to pull it off the consent calendar and put it on to the new business. So, I don't think it's offensive in any way that I do that, and please don't take offense if I decide to do that unilaterally. Yes, Mr. O'Rourke?
Just to make it clear, LNA would be still reviewing all the contracts.
Absolutely. And my, I didn't mean to expand my statement into contracts. I was just trying to make an analogy that we had discussed it with contracts, and it was along the same vein, but I'm not.
But you're going to review them.
We're going to review those, and we're not going to review donations, but.
Okay.
I'm completely in agreement with having donations go on the consent calendar. It makes good sense. Good housekeeping.
Good. Mr. Kellogg?
Chairman, could I offer a comment related to donations that's not directly related to what, but it seems like it's in the same vein? I noticed that in our packages, we have, you know, obviously several that we're considering tonight, which are great, and enlightened the fact that the packages are now very efficiently also posted for the world to see online. I would respectfully request that in the future, we communicate that the account numbers on the checks that are copied are redacted from the online posting.
Okay. That's actually, that's actually a very good point.
Thank you.
Any further comments about my non-agenda topic? All right. While I'm in the mood of talking, I'll say also, we discussed, something I want to discuss is we, in our packets this evening, there was a cover sheet that indicated that because of our technological advances, which are, obviously, anybody who was present this evening saw that we're not quite there yet, but that we would not be getting hard copies delivered by our Monroe police officers who are dutifully serving us and not have to have Ms. Reddick make sometimes thousands of copies for each of us to put, to give us paper copies when everything's available electronically online. However, prior to this evening, a number of council members did approach me to ask me about that policy and respectfully asked that we not implement a paperless system quite yet. So, I will respect those wishes of those who did approach me this evening, and we will continue with the, the agenda delivery process, packet delivery process as we had probably for the last many years. I don't want to guess on how many years it's been, but until such time as we feel more comfortable with that process, and maybe in the future, if there are certain members of council who want them and others that don't, to be more fiscally conservative and to whatever your purpose is, I don't, we can explore that. But for now, we'll keep everything status quo, so don't get terrified about that notice. I will retract that. Yes, Ms. Martin?
Would you entertain just making a list, if you will, of those who want it delivered?
I would do that.
I would cut down on.
I just want to be sure if we're going to, if we're going to do something, I don't want to create further room for error, that some are delivered and some are not delivered, so I want to make sure we vet that process first. And for now, I'd like to just have it so that everybody's getting deliveries, and in the future, if we think we can handle that task, the last thing I want is people to be contacting me or Town Hall on a Saturday or Sunday saying that you just realized that you didn't get your packet, so that we have to have.
But it's also going to be anyway on the.
It'll always be available.
Dot gov, whatever.
It's available online for all of us to see. We're trying our best to get there. I know it's not an easy thing to transition to, so I'll, like I said, I'll respect that, and we will continue to get paper packets until such time as we think it's subjective, exactly, modification. All right, moving on. Public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to participate this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close. Public participation. Moving on to appointments. A, the appointment of Jonathan Stone. Ms. Heim?
Yes, I'd like to make the following appointment for Jonathan Stone of 245 Porter's Hill Road to the Economic Development Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2017.
Motion by Ms. Heim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lepellos. Discussion, Ms. Heim?
Mr. Stone has lived in Monroe for more than 10 years. John earned his Bachelor of Arts from Amherst College, and he is presently a region sales manager, killing, kept living, personal finance. He has served on the Park and Vet Commission for the past three years. John's real interest and experience are ideal for this position on the Economic Development Commission. This appointment replaces the vacancy created by Dave Garble.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Heim, second by Ms. Lepellos. We've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of this appointment? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to B, Ken Welk. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like this, to ask this council to consider the appointment of Ken Welk, Democrat, 18 School Street, for a term ending December 1, 2015, to the Emergency Medical Services Commission.
Motion by Ms. Martin, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Lepellos. Discussion, Ms. Martin?
Mr. Welk served in the U.S. Air Force from 1970 to 1982 as a firefighter slash EMT. After getting out of the military, Ken became a police officer in the city of Bridgeport and retired in 1998. Ken then became active in the Stepney Volunteer Fire Department and the EMS service, where he consistently volunteered over 400 hours in the almost three years that he was a member. Fills a vacancy created by John Breno.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there any further discussion regarding this appointment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Welk, congratulations. I'd have you come up and be sworn in this evening, but we don't have our clerk or selectman available to do so, so you unfortunately need to make another stop.
You can do it for me.
I can do it?
Yep. I've done it in the past.
She's a JP, right?
Yeah, are you JP? I'm a JP.
You're an officer of the court. You can do it.
Do you want me, are you all putting me on the spot to force this, to change this process?
No, we're just saying.
I thought it was such a nice, fluent introduction, and congratulations to Mr. Welk, and I get bombarded by everybody, but.
We just want to tell you, it has been done in the past by the chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I was, I was saying that in jest. Mr. Welk, so congratulations. Thank you very much. I'm not going to break with protocol because of the peer pressure I'm getting from my fellow Town Council members, but congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
So, you know you have to be sworn in by either Mr. Vavrick or the town clerk.
All right, moving on to action items. A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Let's, Ms. Heim?
We have not met. The Board of Finance will be meeting this Wednesday. They canceled the meeting from last week, and they'll be meeting this Wednesday. The Board of Education, they had a meeting regarding the turf field, and they also had discussion about the upcoming budget, with their budget, setting their budget time. The Senior Citizen Committee, talking about the grant, has, like, waiting to see what happens with Chalk Hill and the budget cycle before they distribute any of their money because there was talk that maybe they might be having to be relocated and where the programs might go in light of what they're going to do with Chalk Hill. So, they wanted to wait and see what they, what's going to happen with that before they expend any more of the money from the bequestment that they got. And the garden is in, up in front of the senior center, and the shades they ordered are in, and the computers are in, so right now, everything they expended, everything is in, and they're just waiting. And I will, Ken has anything with EMS and the health?
Certainly. EMS Commission, I know, has canceled their last meeting due to scheduling conflicts. I will say, and I have had discussion with their chairman, and I know that they are actively recruiting for the part-time EMS administrative position that we've, we had approved and we've been discussing. So, that's all I have report from them. As far as Board of Health, as you know, we have some ordinances that are on our agenda to begin discussing tonight. There are a series of matters such as this that the Health Department, the Board of Health, excuse me, working with our new director is working diligently to, to get in place, and so we'll be talking more about that as we move forward. The new Director of Health, now in place, has been taking a more active role in the field as opposed to our Acting Director, who was filling the role prior. The per diem food inspector, who was helping out, who's still available as a per diem inspector, although is not currently being utilized, because we are, I'm told we are in fairly good shape in terms of getting back where we want to be relative to those inspections. So, the Director feels that we can proceed without that individual's hours at that, at this time. And I am told that our part-time nurse started today. And I think that's all I have for health, other than what we're going to discuss later.
Anything further, Ms. Heim?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Martin?
The per diem, what is, and that's apparently not being utilized now, hopefully not too much more, what's that due to the budgeting for?
The, my understanding is that, you recall, we had approved a job description for a food inspector, that, that, that there were funds available because, primarily because of the delay in needing the nurse immediately. So, while that was being recruited and those, that was underway, those, those funds were available to, to get us caught up on food inspections, which were certainly of a higher priority of the board, given the regulatory requirement and the immediate impact to constituent, you know, to residents and our visitors of the town, so.
And just more, if I may quickly, does, does the Board of Health now, do they consider themselves current in, or does the Director consider themselves current in inspection?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to speak for the Director in terms of putting that characterization on it, but I know at a general discussion that was held several weeks ago, I know that all the class, I was, my understanding is that all the lower-class establishments were completely current and that the more complex ones were at least, you know, three quarters or more and well on the way to be on a plan to be appropriately, you know, scheduled, so.
But not there yet?
I don't have that level of detailed information currently, because that wasn't something that was. The last few meetings have been, special meetings very focused on ordinances, so I don't have a, that level of report.
Could you perhaps find out some, you know, some updates for us, just to see where they are?
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly ask, yeah, certainly ask the Board of Health to provide that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Act Item B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works and Parks and Recreation Matters. Mr. O'Rourke?
Our subcommittee has not met since our last session, but I did get an update regarding the underground tanks project. Highway yard tanks are in, and we're down to Wolf Park and Stevenson Fire Station Number Two with regards to those, those two areas being finished up. The project seems to be going, going along just fine at the moment. Parks and Rec did not have a meeting, I believe. Their next one is Monday, November 2nd. P and Z?
Sure, yeah, I'll take that one. P and Z right now is going to be hearing a, a submission on Cumberland Farms that's going to be going in 25, so I guess they have a pretty good, pretty good submission, and it's, it's looking good from at least being able to present to P and Z. From a regulatory perspective, they're about to hear regulations on septic tanks and take a look at changing that possibly. There's approximately 20 pieces of property, commercial real estate in town. It's bifurcated, meaning it's split between residential in the front, commercial in the rear, and it is not able to use septic tanks the way they need to in order to keep their businesses going. So, they're, they're trying to take a look at that and see if they open that up, combine the property so that they can actually do something with that. Also, I think something that's, that should be known to us is they're looking at sign regulations as well. They're opening that, that policy up and taking a look at, starting to standardize signs, but, but actually make more options. So, they're going to kind of have like a menu that the people will be able to pick based on the size of the business, which is usually done by square footage and then set back from the road. So, they're about to be taking a look at that as well, and they'll be looking for input from a strategic perspective from us.
Great.
Yeah.
Anything further, Mr. O'Rourke?
With regards to Inland Wetlands?
Yes. Inland Wetlands met on October 14th, and they had three action items. One was 1427 Monroe Turnpike, regulated activities associated with the construction of a single-family dwelling, including storm drains and so forth, and, and they're going to be holding a public hearing on that application. They also viewed 46 Cutler's Farm Road, regular, regulated activities associated with the construction of a single-family dwelling, and a motion was made to hold a, that at a regular hearing for that application. And the last one is 64 Cambridge Drive, which is a subdivision referral for re-subdivision of property and regulated activities associated with the construction of an additional roadway, driveway with associated grading, utilities and drainage, and so forth, and they are, they are going to hold a public hearing on that. They did hold a public hearing on 285 Cutler's Farm Road, which is Wolf Park. The activities associated with the construction of a utility, of utility conduits beneath the proposed permanent access path in preparation for the installation of two multi-purpose ball fields, and that was, that motion was voted on six-zero in favor.
Thank you very much. Is that it, Mr. O'Rourke?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to action item C, the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Ms. Lepellos?
First of all, we met at 6:00, this brought the meeting, because we had nine items on the agenda, and we wound up finishing up at 7:39. So, using the Chromebook, let me just give you an idea of what some of these were, and the main thing is, we really only have one to bring forward tonight because a lot of them need their ordinances, and they need public hearings. So, we decided rather than having a public hearing with one ordinance, and then two weeks later, another public hearing, we would have some of them combined and merged together. So, let's see if I can get to this. You probably can't. Okay, so, in terms of what we do with LNA, we did the Bell Site Discover Insurance Matter. We did the Town of Monroe Money Purchase Pension Plan. We discussed many things. The other post-employee benefits, the repeal and revisions to Chapter 71, currently titled Health District, revision to Chapter 397, peddlers and transient sellers. We did the new salon ordinance, code of ethics review, anti-blite ordinance review. We postponed, and that's it. Saying yes, we're also going to do the credit card later tonight. We'll, we'll make a motion about the credit card matter.
Thank you, Ms. Lepellos. Moving on to item, action item D is the Trumbull Monroe Health District. As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Knapp, who is the chairman of that district, is attending a meeting for that district in Town Hall, so he's not present. So, if he does have an update for us when he returns, if he returns, we will circle back to this agenda item. The first electman is not present this evening. Moving on to F, we added the Strategic Planning Committee. Mr. Kellogg was, we had our first meeting last week. I called the meeting to order because we had not established the officers yet. Mr. Kellogg was the elected chairman, so I will defer to him as the chairman of that committee. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you said, we did conduct our, our first meeting, and I'm trying to pull up the precise date, which I think I have, I believe it was the 23rd, if I'm correct. I just realized I have a typo on a memo, which I'll deal with later. Two items that, in addition to, as you said, electing our officers, we also identified two action items which we felt were appropriate. We wanted to prioritize the work of the committee, and it was unanimously felt that the first matter that we should address is the future of the Chalk Hill building. Subsequent to that, we had a generic discussion in regards to how we would identify other matters that should be on the planning committee's radar, and that resulted in another communication that, that we had before you. Chairman, would you like me to read these into?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
If appropriate?
What I, and, and by the way, before you do so, I, what, what I'd ask for is not, essentially, because these are, I think are fairly important preliminary communications from all of us on council, that if anybody has any input, please let us know, and if not, we're looking for a consensus. So, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Kellogg, but I just want everybody to listen appropriately.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying, yeah. The intent of bringing this to all of you tonight is exactly that. We're looking for consensus and certainly be willing to entertain any suggestions in regards to this. So, the first memo is regarding the Strategic Planning Committee and call for significant planning items. That's the first one I'd like to review. Both memos are addressed to the first electman and the chairman of all boards and commissions with a copy to all department heads and program managers and the superintendent of schools. The, as I said, the first one is the Strategic Planning Committee and call for significant planning items. I'll note that I've already identified a typo on page one, so this should read as at its October 23rd, 2015 regular meeting. The Town Council, as authorized by its rules and procedures, created the Strategic Planning Committee. The mission of this special committee of the Town Council is to identify and prioritize the town's short-term and long-term goals and objectives in consideration of the town's resources. Furthermore, this committee is specifically charged to work in collaboration, communication, and coordination with elected and appointed boards and commissions, the first electman, department heads, and program managers. At its first meeting, the Strategic Planning Committee agreed that a top priority is to identify all significant planning items of concern. As a leader in our community, we respectfully request that you provide to the committee a list of any and all of such significant projects, including potential projects, that should be in our collective awareness in the spirit of short-term or long-term planning. Projects may involve potential capital spending, significant impacts to operational costs or savings, or any matters where increased multidisciplinary collaboration, communication, and coordination would be necessary and/or appropriate to benefit our town. The Strategic Planning Committee has planned its next meeting for November 5th, 2015 to begin collecting and discussing these issues. Please submit your list along with a short description of each item in time for consideration at this meeting. If there are items where details are not immediately available, please include as much information as possible. We understand this is a short turnaround and do not expect all items to have complete information at this time. The primary objective at this time is issue identification. Please submit your information to the chairman of the Strategic Planning Committee, Kenneth Kellogg, either directly via email or through the first electman's office. Thank you in advance to your time and attention to this request. We look forward to working together to create a common vision for the future of Monroe.
Mr. Kellogg, before we move on, two things. I just want to, I, I think your correction is not needed because you did mention that the Strategic Planning Committee was created on October 13th, and it was created.
Oh, that's right. That was not the meeting, that was the creation.
You're actually correct.
I'm sorry.
If you want to be clear, you know, clarify later on, you can do that, but I think that was correct.
Yep.
The other thing I'd ask, just because it's an initial communication, if you could reference Mr. Reed, who is the secretary, and Ms. Martin as also members of this, I think it'd be appropriate, only because in disseminating the information.
Absolutely.
Mr. Reed and Ms. Martin are frequently, along with yourself, in Town Hall, and if, if there's potentially a discussion to be had about this, it'd probably be helpful that these department heads or those individuals know that they're members. We assume that they're all reading our minutes from our readings and are up to speed on what's going on, but I think that might be appropriate, at least in the first communication that we reference them.
Absolutely. That's an excellent suggestion.
I just have a real house, just a housekeeping, the end of the second paragraph. One of the twos has to go.
I did note that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Ms. Canty?
To what end is this committee being formed? I mean, is it an advisory committee? What are you going to do with the information when you get it? Where does it go?
The information will come back to this full body for deliberation and discussion.
Yes. You weren't here.
No, I wasn't. Sorry.
Last Town Council meeting, what I, not to repeat myself, but the, my, my vision with this was certainly to use the Strategic Planning Committee initially as an investigative tool, an investigative arm, and, and the intention is that, obviously, all of the information is discussed amongst the full body, more so than the other subcommittees, in that, you know, when, when that committee thinks it's appropriate to share their information, when there's enough information, we certainly want to have these discussions as a full body, because we do think that long-term and short-term goals are going to be something that is adopted by council and not just by this subcommittee. But we, we did strategically appoint three individuals who are also members of the three different standing committees, and we just wanted to, you know, use this as a, an informal and more flexible committee to gather information.
Can I just, you know, not to, not to keep this going, but again, to what end? I mean, you're going to get this information, it's going to come to council. Is it then going into, into a, a capital planning situation, budgeted? I mean, what's going to happen with the information?
I think that's to be determined, but we certainly, our goal is to identify planning for the short and long-term future of this town. So, yeah, we, we, my, personally, I can't speak for everybody, but personally, I'd like to see some type of organized list of, of projects, and I did mention, and I'll say it to you as well, that our, my, my hope, and I think it's the full body endorsed, the hope that other electmen. and I think it's the full body endorsed, the hope that other elected bodies utilize a similar tool, if not call it the same thing, so that we can coordinate budgetary concerns and other planning input.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, Mr. Kellogg. Any other comments for discussion about this letter, about any changes? We've made a few. Anything else?
Good letter.
Do we have a consensus that this letter is proper and appropriate and to be sent out essentially on council's letterhead here?
It was a good, well-written letter.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. I agree.
Ms. O'Rourke, does anybody looks like they're in agreement? Excellent job, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. I will incorporate the one update. So I'd like to, I'll let next read memo number two. It's addressed identically as the, as the previous, so I won't, I won't belabor it by reading that again. This one is in reference to the Chalk Hill Building. Memo reads, during our initial meeting, the Strategic Planning Committee identified the future of the Chalk Hill Building as a priority. Consistent with our introductory memo and request for information, we respectfully request that you provide to the committee with any information you have that is relevant to this matter. Information may include, but is not limited to, utilization of the building, including programs and associated financial impacts prior or during its use by the Town of Newtown, current operational costs, whether borne by the Town of Monroe or Newtown, any potential or prospective utilization of the building after use by Newtown has concluded, including program descriptions and associated financial impacts. Please indicate short and long-term program functionality at this facility, including implementation and transitional planning needs which should be considered. Any relevant building plans and specifications, including associated matters, excuse me, matters, such as building codes, required renovations, that may impact future utilization. A breakdown of leasehold improvements from the Town of Newtown and the intended disposition of such improvements upon Newtown's vacating the facility. Any relevant concern, regulation, statute, et cetera, that may restrict potential future use, e.g. zoning, traffic flow, safety, et cetera. A breakdown of the estimated cost to mothball or close the facility. The Strategic Planning Committee wishes to begin review of this information at its November fifth, two thousand fifteen, meeting. Please submit your information to the chairman of the Strategic Planning Committee, Kenneth Kellogg, either directly via email or through the first selectman's office. As in the prior communication, please indicate as much information as possible, given the fast turnaround time. Our primary objective is to ultimately develop a situational awareness and a common operating picture as we collectively discuss the future of this facility. Thank you in advance for your time and attention to this important matter. Suggestions?
Again, my initial comment is just to make sure Mr. Martin, Ms. Martin and Ms. Reed are included for, again, preliminary, although it's following the other one, I just want to make sure that until everybody gets the,
Right.
the idea that they're on there, I think it's appropriate.
I'd be happy to include you both and from the front line, if you're so willing. Ms. Martin, Ms. Reed, you got it.
Any further comments?
Can I ask what time the meetings are? Are they a specific time?
We have only, we have only decided on one meeting date, which was November fifth, I believe.
Yes.
I actually have a notice ready to go up, but I have not hit send yet because I got distracted. My intention was to call that meeting for four o'clock P.M. Given that I know there is a chamber event occurring that evening, I would not want to preclude people from attending the Chamber of Commerce event.
Ms. Kansky.
I just want to say how extremely happy I am that you're taking this action.
Thank you.
And again, so, so the council is aware and the public for that matter, it was, both of these communications were discussed and voted upon and at the initial meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee, there's a lot of input, there's a lot of back and forth, there was a lot of discussion about both communications and specifically, it was very easy and is very easy to get, go off on them. Many tangents, but the focus was to try to identify initial planning needs in two thousand fifteen. This came to the forefront very quickly and I believe Ms. Martin suggested and all of us agreed that we limit our,
Prioritize our focus.
Our, yeah. Limit our laundry list of items for the time being and focus on Chalk Hill and we decided that that was appropriate. So a lot of, I just want everybody to know the process. It wasn't just something that was.
And just in the vein of keeping the full council advice, this, from our initial meeting, from the first moment, I think we all agreed Chalk Hill, that was where we wanted to start.
Right.
And everyone was in agreement on that.
All right. So if there's no further common or changes, I think, again, I'd ask for consensus on the second communication, just not of, not of heads. Looks like everybody's in agreement. So excellent job, Mr. Kellogg. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you to the committee members for their input as well. Excellent.
All right. So while you're still on stage, you, item G is the EMS Facility Work Group.
Oh, yes. EMS Facility Work Group. We have, I'm trying to think if we, I'm not, I don't believe we've had a meeting since last report. I did, there was a meeting, another meeting scheduled, which had some scheduling conflicts, which was canceled. Essentially, the status of the work is that the consultant, who is in the process of doing the first phase of the needs assessment, has had two meetings, two formal meetings now, one with the leadership of EMS and then a subsequent meeting with the, with the full membership invited to the meeting. I actually, we actually noticed that, that actually was a meeting, so I, it was a special meeting noticed of the work group because we had three work group members that, myself included, that chose to sit in on that discussion. So it was a very, I think thoughtful discussion. The consultant, I believe, is very astute in properly directing the input to ensure that as we discuss, you know, what the functional needs are of the service going forward, that we are appropriately looking towards the future and looking at something that will serve us for the long term, but we're also not looking at things that you would categorize as, well, this is a wish list item. It's got to be a true need. And I'm not articulating nearly as well as he did that night, but I think he did a very good job in steering that conversation, understanding, you know, what is it that we truly need for, to serve the community. So that being said, I know he's got a document that he's on as an ongoing revision of the needs assessment document. So it first started with functionality and it's going to evolve. Once that, that is locked down, he'll start putting actual square footage to those estimates. So I think that's kind of where it's at. There's going to be some back and forth and follow-up with EMS, the EMS membership. From there, once they have a document that the membership has kind of gotten their arms around, it will then go to EMS Commission for their input. And then once the EMS Commission has fully vetted it, it will come back to the work group. And then I will bring it here.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? One thing I want to mention, Mr. Kellogg, this did come up in the initial Strategic Planning Commission meeting, is the, another primary need that was identified was EMS, the EMS needs itself. And it was discussed amongst the three of us present that, you know, how would that need fit in with the existence of the EMS Facility Work Group? Could you just comment, since you've been involved on the EMS Facility Work Group the entire time? I thought you had a very interesting vision with regards to that and essentially stating that, that both committees, it would be appropriate for both committees to be working on the project.
Correct, correct. Yes. I think that the EMS Facility Work Group, obviously, I mean, they, they have a few, a few charges that come directly from the Town Council. One is to do, one is to under, is to do basically the needs assessment, which is, which is occurring right now. The second was to identify funding sources and, and the third was to deal with finding, identifying sites and to consider the existing site as one of the possibilities. I think that, you know, obviously, you know, there's a lot of work that that group can do and I, I know that, you know, Ms. Martin said that she felt that the, the work group was functioning very well. We saw no need to necessarily consolidate into the Strategic Planning Committee. However, one thing I do think is appropriate is that while the work group will continue to identify funding, grant funds, there's a whole laundry list that the committee has actually started to think through. Here are different things that we could possibly do as a town, as a community, to identify potential funding sources. But I do feel at some point, you know, the, the issue of bonding is inevitable, that, you know, there's got to be some consideration that, that's a reality. And I think where the Strategic Planning Committee could certainly assist is to better, best ascertain what the appetite for such bonding is. I think that's a key component. So I think that's a, it's a definite area where the planning committee can assist.
And I think everybody agreed.
In light of all the other priorities that we're going to, that we know of now and that we're going to gather by virtue of these memos.
And I, everybody agreed and I thought it was a good point, especially in light of Ms. Kansky's questions earlier on, as to how we envision that committee working, you know, despite there being another committee working on different, different aspect of the same project.
Right. And if I could make one more other note, as we're talking about, kind of going back to the Strategic Planning Committee, but I also want to make note for everyone here and for the record also, is one thing that we haven't addressed in either the memos, but we certainly discussed at the, at our last meeting and, and I think we still intend to do, is where appropriate is very deliberately solicit the public's input.
Right.
That could be public hearings, that could be workshops, exciting others as appropriate. So I don't want to, I want to make sure that's clear as well. And some of these items clearly we'll, we'll call for that.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kellogg. Moving on to unfinished business. Monroe Local Health, I had high aspirations in setting the agenda, as you all can see, with many action items on here, but not to scare everybody, we're going to not address many of them, but most of them this evening. We just didn't know how far we would get. Monroe Local Health, just so we're all aware, I'm waiting on a, an update from our town attorney, who is away at the moment, but we wouldn't have had an update anyway because as we know, Mr. Knapp is meeting with the Chalk Hill Health District this evening. So we expect that there'll be some finality to the negotiations, good or for bad, for better for worse. So we'll have an update on that hopefully November ninth at our next meeting. The code of ethics review, again, I put that on there, something LNA has been looking at, a review of the code of ethics. We didn't get to it this evening because of the workload that we had. If we had gotten to it and completed it, we would have been in a position to move that agenda item forward. So it was on there as a placeholder. Anti-blite, the same thing. It was on our LNA agenda. We didn't get to it this evening. If we had, we would have brought it to the entire council, but we didn't get to it. So that was on our, on our agenda for future meetings. Moving on to new business.
Mr. Chairman, could I just?
Yes, Ms. Martin.
You ought to advise the council, I believe, that the first selectman was at a regional meeting.
Yes.
I forget what you said.
Economic development?
EDC.
EDC, something EDC, yes.
So the assumption is that he's not at the Health District meeting, Monroe?
I can't answer that question. Unfortunately, Ms. Martin, but that's what I was, information I was given.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
By the way, for the record, I was told that the Health District meeting was an executive session, so I'm not sure we would have been permitted or invited into the executive session, but that's what I was told. Moving on to new business, A, Town of Monroe Bell Site Discover Insurance Matter. Again, something that may have made its way to our agenda this evening. It's not ready. It was not discussed in LNA, but it was on our agenda that will be forthcoming at our next meeting. B, Town of Monroe Section four oh one A Money Purchase Pension Plan. Again, this was discussed in detail this evening. There was some information in our packet as well. Mr. Bonowski's been working on, on this pension, money purchase pension plan. And just, just for the record, just so we can advise council on what, A, our intention was prior to LNA and B, what our result ended up being. The pension plan, John Attorney Galliet issued an opinion letter, basically, and a resolution that we intended to move forward with this evening, which we have in our packets, which establishes a new defined, correct if I'm wrong, Mr. Bonowski's benefit plan. Is that correct? The benefit plan that will be,
Defined contribution.
A defined contribution plan that will be available to new hires moving forward. And so Mr. Galliet had reviewed it and there is a large trust document and a large pension document, but the members of LNA thought it would be more appropriate to get a legal, a formal legal opinion from Mr. Galliet, which Mr. Bonowski had requested prior, did not receive a formal response on, to be sure that there is no ordinance required to initiate this new plan, to adopt this new plan. It, so we thought it'd be more appropriate to wait for that opinion letter before we move forward with the current resolution. So based upon that, LNA has made that request. We will meet again before our next council meeting and hopefully we'll be ready to go with either the documents as they are or with an ordinance. So that's the story on that. Is there any questions or discussion or comments about that? All right. Moving on to item C, the other post-employment benefits trust, otherwise known as the OPEB trust. Again, this was discussed in LNA this evening. Attorney Fallon from Pullman and Comley, who is our bond counsel, did draft an ordinance and that was also in our, our package. We did review the ordinance. We did make two changes to that ordinance as it's proposed, just so everybody's aware. Section three, line one, it says the town acting through its first selectman, first selectman was deleted, replaced with town council. It was actually a change that was recognized by Attorney Fallon and Mr. Bonowski and brought to our attention prior to our meeting this evening. So that change had been made. And then there was also a grammatical change in section one, just adding a period. Those are the only two comments made by LNA, but it was our intention, although we are prepared to move forward with the ordinance this evening. It does require a public hearing and to go through the ordinance process, but we thought since we were waiting on the determination as to whether or not we need an ordinance for the pension plan and we are also waiting to call for a public hearing on a number of other ordinances that we'll be discussing briefly this evening, so as to be more convenient for the public should they have input on this, we wanted to call for a public hearing at our next meeting, November ninth, for a public hearing, most likely November twenty-third, so that the members of the public would only have to come out once and could speak on a number of issues at a number of separate public hearings that would take place that evening. So that was the thought process of LNA there. Questions, comments? Again, you know, so we're clear, we're, we are prepared with those two changes to move this ordinance forward. So if there are comments, we'll have one more opportunity to review that. Before we move on, Mr. Bonowski's here. Mr. Bonowski, anything you want to say in regard to these? You're not obligated to, but I didn't want you to
No.
lose your, lose your opportunity.
I can cover them.
All right. Well, thank you for attending LNA this evening and for filling us in with all the information. So I appreciate that. Moving on to D, we have repeal and revisions to Chapter seventy-one. Again, this was discussed in LNA this evening. D and F are both Health Department-related ordinances. I want to thank Mr. Kellogg, who is our liaison to the Health Department, who did attend LNA this evening and did, there was also a lot of conversation in LNA this evening about this, these two ordinances, proposed ordinances. D is essentially a housekeeping ordinance. It's repealing the old ordinance, Chapter seventy-one, that is entitled Health District. We now have a Health Department as we did prior to the Health District, so we are just, as a matter of housekeeping, making the proper reference to the Health Department in lieu of Health District. It was discussed in LNA and there were not significant changes made to it, but there were some comments. And again, LNA is going to meet again to discuss it in greater, in greater detail, but I think we are fairly ready to proceed with that. Mr. Kellogg, anything? Mr. Kellogg, anything you can say about that?
I think that covers it.
Okay. Questions, comments, anybody else?
I would just make, I have detailed minutes, so when you get the minutes, which I'll run tonight or first thing tomorrow morning, if you read them as a council, you'll see everything that they're mentioning is in the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Moving on to Item E, that is Chapter 397, revisions to peddlers and transient sellers. Again, Mr. Kellogg, as he's been perusing our, all of our ordinance, ordinances in town, it appears, through some questioning by a constituent, did review this particular chapter, and he reviewed it with respe, in specific, with specific regard, well, to food trucks. And he was told that essentially the impediment to the approval of food trucks in town was this unknown ordinance that existed, and through some research, he did discover this peddlers and transient sellers ordinance. We discussed it at length in LNA, we made a number of revisions to it, to just make it more inclusive and to make it more clear that we were trying to accept from this particular restriction food trucks, so that the board, the Health Department could issue whatever license they deemed appropriate to food trucks, and they would not be restricted from operating here in town unless they did not have a proper license or inspection or things of that nature. So, we discussed that. We had a few comments as well. I will mention that we asked Mr. Kellogg and LNA to go back to the Board of Health to just discuss a few comments, if they had any comments, to a couple of changes, and anybody else that, or Mr. Kellogg, to come up with some suggestions to a few changes that we had made in LNA, just language changes, essentially, and we'll review this again before our next council meeting. Again, both the revisions to Chapter 71, the Health District, and this, our ordinances, so we'll require a public hearing. We're trying to do this in a inefficient manner and have the public hearing, to the extent that we can, on the same evening, so that we can comment, comment on it and hear comments from the public. Mr. Kellogg, did I cover that one?
I believe you did.
Any comments?
As you, as you stated, the intent is that, I think, probably unintended at the time this was written, because this, dealing with peddlers and transient sellers, you know, could certainly be interpreted to apply and to a food truck, so as defined in the Public Health Code, itinerant food vending is certainly allowed under the State Health Code, and it is allowed by the Monroe Health Department. So, the intent here would be to include a carve-out exception of, in terms of applicability of this section, to itinerant food vendors, so long as they are properly licensed, don't create a safety hazard, and are operating with the proper permissions within town, so, and we are being very specific, so that it, it's appropriately limited, and we're not looking to create something where trucks would be permitted to go up and down the, you know, public roadways without any kind of permission. So it's, it's very specific. So for example, to allow a commercial owner to have a food truck present for the mutual benefit of, of customers.
Any further comments? Mr. Reed?
Any merit in just even thinking strategically partnering with the EDC on this, thinking about what they think and what they've done in this space as well, especially if we're trying to impress upon others to create similar strategic committees, so looking at this in totality. So that would be my first comment, and the second one would be, possibly just making sure we don't get too ahead of ourselves, definitely hooking with the Health Department, planning and zoning, parking regulations are very strict, they're very specific, they could have something to say about this, to make it work.
I agree, I did have a, you know, a, a conversation with the chairman of PNC to ensure that he, there were no, you know, this wouldn't be running afoul of, of any existing zoning regulations, and his comment was that he certainly would like to see any, you know, if a commercial establishment was going to have this on a regular basis, a predefined location that the truck would be established, that that could be done in the context of plan reviews. So I agree with you that, yeah, we definitely should keep that in the loop as well, but I did make sure that there wasn't any zoning issue that he was aware of, that would, we would be running afoul of.
Any further comments?
Yeah, so, but from an EDC perspective, I mean, that's exactly why I think we need to do this.
Yeah, one of the reasons why, one of the comments from LNA was just to get complete input on this particular ordinance and not be so narrowly focused on just the food truck carve-out. If we're changing an ordinance, the feeling was in LNA that we get input from the Chief of Police as well, since his, his name is mentioned in the ordinance, and there may be other applications that need carve-outs or to be more inclusive, so I think that's a great suggestion. I didn't think of EDC, it didn't come up in LNA. PNC did, and we will certainly get input from them, as well as the Chief of Police and anybody else that, and the members of council think is appropriate. We did mention sending a note to the Selectman's Office so that he could send it out to anybody he thought was appropriate as well, before, you know, we get too far along in the process, but it's a good suggestion.
Excellent.
Any other suggestions? All right?
That's great.
And F, the new salon ordinance, again, I won't be as detailed with this, I'll let Mr. Kellogg speak, because it's a little bit more detailed, but again, this was the Health, the Board of Health trying to get ahead and get up to speed on making sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, and with good foresight, so we were hoping to, we did have some, LNA did review this proposed ordinance this evening. We did make some comments and suggestions to it, looking for input back from maybe better definitions to certain aspects of it from the Board of Health. We did explain it to Mr. Kellogg, but, and we expect to, again, meet again and call for a public hearing if we feel it's ready for that. But Mr. Kellogg, if you want to just take everybody through what the outline is and the intention of it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, the, the proposed ordinance would be to create a, a new chapter titled Salons. Salons are very broadly defined, it'd be like kind of a highest level generic term, and would be inclusive of barber, barber shops, hairdressing, cosmetology, tanning, any services of a nail technician or any combination thereof, and there's obviously other, those, some of those terms themselves are defined as well. Within the State Public Health Code, salons are certainly discussed, and the Health Department does have the authority to inspect. However, to, to license as we do, we should properly have an ordinance, and this is the first of, of a few ordinances that the Board of Health, along with our new Director of Health, are undertaking to come before us. This one was prioritized simply because of the time in which these establishments are all coming up for their annual relicensure. So this one is the, the first one we want to tackle. The State Public Health Code does not get as specific as it does in some of the other areas, such as food establishments, so in this ordinance, when it comes before you, you'll see various technical standards that are referenced, which go into a little bit more detail than you might expect in an ordinance, but it's there because the state code is silent on that, or the silent order is not specific enough, and it is common for other, other towns and other districts for that, or Health District for that, to have a specific ordinance or collection of ordinances that would address this, these establishments. So, obviously, we'll get copies to everyone for their review prior, and if there's any more explanation I can give at this point without, without reading it, which I certainly don't want to do, because it's, it'll, we'll be here a long.
It's very premature, I just wanted to give everybody an outline, and certainly we'll have copies forthcoming to all members of council, and as we edit it, you'll, you'll be apprised.
Right.
All right, any further comments or questions right now? All right, seeing none. Moving on to G, actually an item we can hopefully approve this evening, donation to the Monroe Police Department. Ms. Lepalas?
I make a motion to accept a donation for the Monroe Police Department. It's a donation in the amount of $25 from Sally Casella.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Heim. Discussion, it's fairly self-explanatory, but again, this was why I was mentioning earlier, a $25 donation, you know, probably would be more appropriate for the consent calendar than to have us discuss it, and certainly, it's a, it's a nice thing to get donations. I think the, it's obvious, the intent of having council approve donations is to ensure that we are accepting them from what we all may deem to be appropriate sources or individuals and things of that nature, so I haven't ever seen there be a situation where they, we deemed them inappropriate, but again, that's why it's there, we don't want to change that process, so. Any further discussion? All right.
Try to pin into a fact in first place.
All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to Item H, donation to the Monroe Volunteer Emergency Medical Service.
I make a motion to accept the donation for Monroe Volunteer Emergency Medical Service in the amount of $150 from Jennifer Aguilar.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Heim. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Item I, donations to the Monroe Food Pantry.
I make a motion to accept a donation for the Monroe Food Pantry in the amount of $2,157.38 from several residents and businesses.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Heim. Any further discussion? We have in our packet, there's copies of all the various checks.
Do you want me to read them?
Sure, why don't you do that for the record, please?
Okay, so, Ann Anderson of Old Castle Drive, $100. Lee and Dorothy Hustler of Stanley Road, $25. Monroe Food Pantry from Robert Jampe, $500. Monroe Newcomers and Neighbors Club for $161. Diana and Jack Van Der Wieland Food Pantry, $25. And one of them is Kevin and Diana McCaffrey, $25.
What is it?
Ms. Martin?
Here's one.
That's, is there any on the back?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, let it hold there. Okay, and...
So fast.
Michael Simp, $30. Newtown Savings Bank Foundation, $1,000, and that goes to the Monroe Services. Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, $41.38. And Caruba, which is a new business in town, $250. To, to the Monroe Food Pantry.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Item J, the donations to Project Warmth.
I make a motion to accept a donation for Project Warmth in the amount of $2,438 from several residents and organizations.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Heim, discussion, Ms. Lepalas?
Yes, first check is Washington Lodge, Project Warmth, $500. Andrew and Jen, well, Andrew Greenawalt and Jennifer Cristo, $1,300. The Town of Monroe, and then Monroe Public School Parents Council for Project Warmth, $228. Monroe Congregational Church, Project Warmth, $250. And that's it for these.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Any further discussion or comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries eight to zero. Our last agenda item for the evening is Item K, which was added to the agenda, that's credit card authorization resolution. Do we have a motion, Ms. Lepalas?
Yes, we do. I move to adopt this resolution as written and limited to single credit card accounts with Newtown Savings, and there are four people who will be able to use these credit cards, the Finance Director, her selectman, the treasurer, and the Deputy Finance Director.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin. For discussion purposes, Mr. Bonowski brought to our attention this evening in LNA, we did add it to our agenda that there was a, the current credit card is still in the name of our former Finance Director, Mr. Tomczyk. There's a secondary authorized individual, Ms. Mead, so we're able to have Ms. Mead access that account, but they've, in the process of attempting to get a new credit card with Newtown Savings Bank, Newtown Savings Bank required this pre-printed resolution from the entire, assigned, approved by resolution from the council. We were given in LNA a generic sample resolution in the future, when this is an example of our wonderful technology, because if I had it, I probably could have gotten it before everybody on our Chromebooks this evening, so in the future, hopefully we can do that.
Fine. Nothing, public.
So, we have a generic authorization from Newtown Savings Bank, that, there's two pages. It essentially authorizes listed individuals for listed identified accounts, which we limited to a single credit card account with Newtown Savings Bank. We do not have the credit card account number yet, but Mr. Bonowski, when he gets that information, will include that on the, the application. It's signed by probably myself and the clerk after, if the resolution is adopted, authorizing the issuance of the cards, and it asks for a list of individuals by name and title and their signature, and what I've identified, Mr. Bonowski, Mr. Baverick, as Ms. Lepalas pointed out, the Treasurer, I'm sorry, the First Selectman, the Director of Finance, to be by position, but it's going to be name on here for purposes of the credit card. Director of Finance, the First Selectman, the Treasurer, and at Mr. Bonowski's request, the Deputy Finance Director. The motion in LNA, I just think it's important for everybody to know, the motion in LNA was passed two to one, believe it or not, I was the, I voted against adding the deputy, against the, the motion, only because I did not want to add the Deputy Director of Finance as an authorized signatory, but Ms. Lepalas and Ms. Martin thought it was appropriate, the explanation by Mr. Bonowski, and he's here, if anybody wants to ask him the question, was that there are many times where, in the emergency situation where the card is shut down, or otherwise, we need, they need to speak to the bank, the issuing bank, it's difficult if someone that's not listed is not around to have those discussions, so that was his, reason for his request. The reason I, I didn't think it was appropriate, because I think there's inherent responsibilities when it comes to financial accounts that should be vested in directors and not deputies for that reason. That's my, my personal belief. And that's it. Discussion, comments?
Sounds good.
All right. Mr. Knapp?
What do you think?
What do you think about this?
Well, my opinion...
He looks washed out.
I've been through enough today.
All right, Mr. Kellogg?
I thought we were voting.
All right, so all those in favor? And against? You in favor, Mr. Knapp?
I wasn't here for Halloween, I want you to talk about it.
All right, well, let's, let's, you, you're present, so I'll, I want you to be able to vote. So we have before us a, the motion is to approve a resolution that authorizes the First Selectman, the Director of Finance, the Treasurer, and the Deputy to be the signatories for purposes of access on a single credit card account with Newtown Savings Bank, because the current credit card that we have is still in the name of Mr. Tomczyk.
I'm in favor.
All right, so this, so we're clear, these are the four listed people, all those in favor? And against, motion carries nine to zero. Before we move on to second public participation, Mr. Knapp, do you have anything to report, since you were not here for your report in the Trumbull Monroe Health District?
Well, going to seem, seem like I'm duplicating my last answer. Another proposal has been submitted to both towns. The attorneys are, Trumbull Attorney and Monroe's Attorney are in agreement with the The Board Directors are in agreement with the proposal. The Board Directors are in agreement with the proposal. It's going to be in the hands of the attorneys for a few minor wordings before it can be presented for open discussion. It's a fairly, it's probably one of the best proceedings that we had, we're close to an agreement. And that's basically it.
Okay. Thank you for that. I did mention earlier, we had, under unfinished business, Monroe Local Health, and I did mention that there was a meeting happening and that we would hopefully have some resolution to the ongoing negotiations at our next meeting, so it sounds like we were in line.
We're moving, tonight was very aggressive, and I think we got a lot accomplished.
All right. Second public, Mr. Kellogg, I'm sorry.
If you would allow me to just make a quick footnote on our comment before we...
Please, sure.
I'm sorry to backtrack, I just wanted to be very clear, I failed to mention in the new salon ordinance, although I'm characterizing it as a new ordinance, which it is for purposes of the Town of Monroe, I want to be very clear that the establishments were licensed and regulated by the former district by a similar regulation that the district had on its books, so the intent of the Board of Health is to create a similar ordinance, in this case, an ordinance that will codify that, but this is not anything new that we're imposing upon the existing businesses. In fact, the Board of Health has done a very good job with the intent of having the appropriate level of protection of the public health, but also being very cognizant of not being unduly restrictive in how we regulate our businesses. So, I don't want anyone leaving thinking that this is something new that's going to be a large impact to existing businesses, this is going to just roll into the next licensure period.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Second public participation, are there any members of the public who wish to participate? Mr. Hossel? Name and address, please.
Ms. Hossel, two seven zero Stanley Road. I have a question, I guess more than anything, are you all aware of the CFAP program that we had some time ago, several years back? Is your planning committee similar to that? And will that be taking the place of CFAP? I don't know that CFAP was ever disbanded totally, I was part of it way back when, and it was chaired by the Chairman of P&amp;Z.
Rick, Rick.
So, I just wondered if we still have a CFAP, or does this take its place? But I'm really glad to see somebody's taking action. I mean, I came to tour this council months ago, probably more than a year ago, and suggested we do something about Phil, and I think you were the first to charge and to do that, and I think that's a great thing.
Mr. Hossel, I know we don't normally have a question-answer session, but I will forward your question on to the First Selectman, so that he can answer it for both you and the entire council.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak in the second public participation? Mr., before Mr. Knapp goes, before we adjourn, I just wanted to mention, this is our last meeting before the election, the municipal election. As everybody here knows, and I'm not sure everybody, all the members of the public know, but there are no contested races for town council, although that should, I don't want to discourage anybody from going out and voting, and I would hope that you would exercise your right to vote, but as a result, we know who the members of council are going to be. Mr. Knapp and Ms. Heim have been serving with us, and Ms. Heim, for a number of years, I don't want to venture to say how many years, but, and Mr. Knapp, it's, I just want to say, on behalf of myself, and give any other members of council the opportunity to just say thank you for your service, thank you for all you've done. Ms. Heim will be our Treasurer, and I know you're certainly well-qualified for that, and we'll do a fabulous job there, but I just wanted to say thank you for your service, and we'll certainly miss both of your input, so. If anybody else has any comments, I don't want to be the only one that steals the show, so I don't, I don't want to end it with my own words, although I think I've spoken plenty this evening, so everybody else is welcome to comment.
I would echo the same words.
And I would also. It's been lovely serving with you. I'll give you.
All right.
Absolutely, I will heartily echo your comments.
And with that, Mr. Knapp, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Well, yeah, I'm not done yet.
Oh, you want to speak publicly?
It's just gone on a long time now.
I apologize.
Raymond D. Knapp, sixty-one Ripton Ridge Road, Monroe, Connecticut. I've had the pleasure of serving on the council for four terms. Unfortunately, due to the powers-to-be, I am not being nominated to serve again. I've enjoyed working with most of you people on both sides of the fence. I really wish I did have the opportunity to rerun again, but again, I can't control anything beyond that. And again, it's been a pleasure to serve with all of you, and I wish you all the best of luck.
Same to you.
With that, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Knapp. Second by Ms. Lepels, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Knapp, sorry to steal your, steal your thunder, I didn't realize that you were walking, I thought you were trying to run out of here.